Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Ahmad Inshasi is the Imam for the Islamic Society of Greater Oklahoma City. He'll lead us in the invocation, and afterwards I'll ask Councilwoman Meg Salyer, she'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
In the name of God, most gracious, most merciful, Lord of Adam, you curated us from a single soul, that of Adam and Eve, and made us into tribes and nations so we might know one another, serve one another, and aid one another. Help us today to do just that, Lord. Lord of Noah, you guided us to understand that although we might have come on different arcs, that we might have crossed different oceans. Help us see today that we are now together in the promised land. Lord of Abraham, Ishmael, and Isaac, and Jacob, we pray to God Almighty that our city will be a place of peace with no atrocities, no brutalities, and no homicide. Lord of Joseph, open our hearts and minds to hear your voice, speak in peace, tolerance, and love. Lord of Job, grant us patience and endurance. Lord of David, help us, Lord, to search deep within our soul so we may hear, feel, and touch the divine harmony of your love, wisdom, and justice. Lord of Moses and Aaron, help us stand firm against injustices with no fear. Lord of Jesus Christ and Virgin Mary, we all pray that Almighty guide us to a unified city, our own Jerusalem, the city of God, among the red clay of our land. Help us feed the hungry, house the homeless, and help us cure the sick. Lord of the Last Messenger, you sheltered him as an orphan, so he decided to adopt the world. Help us promote social justice, assist us to support public welfare, and grant us the will and the determination to look after the elderly and to respect the young. Help us today with your might to make us assist the citizens of this city. Guide us with your wisdom to make sound decisions. Direct us with your divine direction to make a difference in someone's life. Pardon us, Lord, if we make the wrong decision, for indeed no human is as perfect as a divine one. We come together today so our prayers will be uplifted to shine the way to the kingdom of heaven. We ask you, Lord, today to answer our prayers in your divine, merciful, compassionate name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Each month, the Oklahoma City Rotary Club helps us award a Teacher of the Month resolution. I'll ask Edward Hudson to come forward, and I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution as we get settled.
Whereas Edward Hudson has been named Teacher of the Month by the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City for January 2012. Whereas Edward Hudson is the band director at Putnam City West High School. Edward Hudson was offered the position of Director of Bands in 2008 after the retirement of his mentor, Ben Fast. And whereas, within his first two years as band director, Edward Hudson doubled the number of students enrolled in band. Whereas Edward Hudson was named the 2010-2011 Putnam City West Teacher of the Year and the 2011 Young Music Educator of the Year for Oklahoma Music Educators Association. Whereas, the Putnam City West Band received a Concert Band Superior Rating last year, a feat not accomplished at the school in over 20 years. And whereas Edward Hudson is appreciative to his wonderful colleagues, his supportive administration and staff, and most of all, his wonderful family, wife Jessica and baby Carmen, for being so supportive of his dreams and expectations. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Edward Hudson on his selection as January 2012 Teacher of the Month by the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
And the suspense continues, because now we have to get a resolution and actually vote on this.
Bringing to the attention that there are serious traffic concerns and a professional person needs to be the one that looks at this thing and presents recommendations. Less than a month ago, folks at Chesapeake and the neighborhood and the city met on December 14th, and at that meeting, which was less than a month ago, Chesapeake folks were using phones and looking at the area in maps and making suggestions and talking about what we could do to fix this. And at that same meeting and subsequently, members of these two neighborhoods have been sitting at kitchen tables, drawing on paper and trying to present solutions. We're not civil engineers. So I think that this request is very appropriate, and I think that this request is probably going to be what the future will hold when developers ask for upzoning requests. Thank you very much. John Miller? Okay, Susan Reed? All right. And this item has been, the request is to defer it?
Yes.
To win?
January 24th is two weeks.
Well, three weeks would probably be better, I think, if we're gonna...
What, three weeks is the budget?
Then we can't do three weeks.
Four?
Do four. Dennis?
Three weeks, which was discussed as our budget workshop on the 31st, so we need to take a look at either the 24th, which would be a push for the traffic study, or to put it back until February 7th.
We would hope the 24th. Now, keeping in mind, there's at least two traffic studies that have been done. Mr. Johnson did a traffic study, and I think TEC did a traffic study for Mr. Coon when he was working on Western. So I think much of the data has already been simulated, so it's just a matter of working on some conclusions. We'd like two weeks if we could.
Okay. All right, we'll shoot for January 24th. Sure, come on up, Rob.
To the knowledge of both neighborhoods, the most recent traffic study was done in 2007. If I'm incorrect on that, I'd be happy to be corrected. That was prior to even the classing curve being built. So we perceive that that traffic study is antiquated. Thank you very much.
We have a mo—do we get a second on the motion of deferral? All right, cast your votes on the deferral. That item is deferred until January 24th. Thank you all for coming down today. Item 8B has been deferred until February 21st. Item C is a zoning case in Ward 7. It was recommended for denial by the Planning Commission. The address is 1111 North Bryan Avenue. It's currently R1 single-family, and it would be moving to see-through community commercial. Skip?
The applicant has withdrawn his request.
All right. So I'm guessing that no one here today is to speak on this item, and we'll just simply move forward?
Yes, ma'am. I got a call from one of the representatives yesterday.
All right. Francis, do we need to vote on that item or just move forward?
Yeah.
Then we'll do so. It's withdrawn. We'll move on to 8D, and I understand we do need executive session on this item?
Yes.
All right. Cast your votes. That item is moved to executive session. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. Is anyone here wishing to speak under the item listed under item 9A, claims recommended for approval? All right, how about a motion then?
Move the item.
And a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to items from council. Pat, you have anything for us this morning?
No.
All right. Skip?
David.
Meg?
David?
Pete, we're on items from council. Do you have anything for us today? All right. Ed? Gary?
Well, having missed last Tuesday, I can't pass up the chance to say, "Go, folks." I was out there coming home the same day that everybody was coming home from that game, and the airport in Phoenix was quite festive in orange, so...
City manager reports.
This morning, we have Jennifer Gooden here from the Office of Sustainability to give us an update on her office's activities.
Thanks for the opportunity to give an update on the activities of the Office of Sustainability. Some of you may be familiar with the office, but for anyone who's not, I thought I'd give just a really brief history on it. The need for the program was identified back in 2008, and at that time, a task force was put together to determine what the structure of the program would be. And then in 2009, the city received an Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant from the U.S. Department of Energy in the amount of $5.4 million. And that block grant, commonly called EECBG, is—it required the development of an energy efficiency and conservation strategy, and that was really the first activity of the Office of Sustainability, was to work with stakeholders and implement that energy efficiency and conservation strategy. Since 2009, our primary focus has been the implementation of that strategy and the programs that were recommended by it. I included a slide here with the stated purpose of the Office of Sustainability, just to give an overview of that. You can see it's to provide sustainability planning, energy efficiency upgrades, technical recommendations, and outreach services. And that's both internally to city departments and also externally to Oklahoma City residents and visitors. And the purpose of that is to integrate sustainability into decision-making for improved economic, environmental, and social health. So it's to look at sustainability as a way of doing business. And with those last three factors, that's what you'll often hear referred to as the triple bottom line. When we look at our activities, we look at the impact on the economy and our finances, on the environment, and on social health, which we think of as neighborhood help, community help, and quality of life for all of our residents. The majority of our work is funded by this Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant right now, so that's mostly what I'll talk about today. I've divided our programs into four categories. First, I'll talk about facilities and fuel, then our recycling activities, some work with codes and regulations, and our community programs. And these projects have all been collaborations across the city with a variety of departments and daily working with a lot of other departments across the city. So starting with facilities and fuel, at the time that we knew that we wanted to do upgrades to make our city facilities more efficient, and so we started with a baseline energy assessment. The purpose was to identify the biggest users of energy within all of the city and the largest sources of emissions. Total energy used was equivalent to just over 1.8 million BTUs in its baseline year of 2009. And based on that study, we saw that facilities were the largest users of energy. Forty-two percent of the energy used by this city came from our facilities. And facilities also presented a significant opportunity for return on investment, so we focused a significant portion of our resources on facility upgrades. So one of the major activities recommended by the Energy Efficiency Strategy was retrofits. And before those changes were made, we contracted for a baseline audit. The auditors go in and do energy audits on 50% of the square footage of city facilities. And based on those results, we identified opportunities to do retrofits to 17 city facilities. Those were HVAC and lighting retrofits primarily, along with some other equipment. And we've also installed energy management systems in seven additional city facilities. If you aren't familiar with an energy management system, it's like a high-tech programmable thermostat. It allows you to monitor primarily HVAC equipment so that you can provide the settings and controls over those and see an energy reduction as a result. The projections show that all of our retrofit activities together and conservation activities will result in an annual savings of up to $200,000. And we're putting a system in place that will allow us to track actual savings against projected savings. This energy accounting system, once it is populated with data, will allow us to benchmark all of the approximately 300 city facilities that use some contract of energy, and we'll be able to look at that compared to historical data and weather trends and track the impact of our investments in a dollar sense. And we'll also be able to track the accuracy of the bills that we receive from utilities and the rates that were charged, along with that energy accounting system. Here under facilities and fuel, I also wanted to mention that we recently completed an upgrade of the city's CNG fast fill station. Previously, we had a slow fill station, and that's been retrofitted. It's located at the central maintenance facility at Southwest 15th and Portland, where it's used to fuel the city fleet. That was completed and accepted by council in December. The city currently has approximately 90 CNG vehicles, that's both heavy and light-duty vehicles. And previous to this upgrade, one of the barriers to expansion was the amount of time it took to refill the vehicles, which at that time was measured in hours rather than minutes. And so this is now a commercial capacity station that will allow us to continue to expand the CNG fleet. So moving on from facilities and fuel to recycling, we have two recycling activities. By far the largest is with the Cox Convention Center in the Chesapeake Arena. With these two buildings being two of our largest operations, there was an identified need to increase the recycling efforts there. So we've purchased equipment, like the baler you see here, and also recycling receptacles to increase the recycling program there. The convention center staff estimates that it will defer—we'll be able to divert half the trash that was being sent to the landfill away from the landfill and to recycling services now, which will mean 300 tons less material entering the landfill annually as a result of the work in these two facilities. At the Cox Convention Center and the Chesapeake Arena, we also used funds to train staff to make sure that everyone really understood the processes behind how recycling would work, both on the floor staff and the management staff, and to make sure that they were able to follow through with those processes. And we also have developed an awareness campaign that will be—that will help visitors to the convention center and arena understand the recycling program there, participate in it as they wish to. The second activity we funded under the recycling program was additional recycling bins on the street in the Project 180 area. Moving on to codes and regulations, I'm going to talk about two things here. The first is an Oklahoma City Energy Code, and the second is Historic Preservation Green Guidelines. So on the Oklahoma City Energy Code, this is a topic that will be coming before you in the next month or two by Development Services. Just to give you some history on this, we are under obligation to adopt an energy code equivalent to the International Energy Conservation Code 2009. That's commonly called the IECC 2009. So we need to adopt something at that level or greater by 2017. This is an obligation incurred by the state, but Oklahoma City is attesting jurisdiction for that. At this time, we do not have an energy code in Oklahoma City. So the strategy is to develop an intermediate energy code as a stepping stone to the IECC 2009. Contractors working with stakeholders, primarily in the building industry, to talk about this plan and to get their feedback and make sure that we understand all of the concerns of the building industry. And the recommendation will be that the energy code be implemented in connection with the updates to the building codes, the IRC residential building code and the IBC residential —commercial building code, which will be discussed by council in the coming months.
Jennifer, that seems kind of ominous. We're going forward, and we're going to have to adopt this energy code, and—but I know we've been in discussions with some of the stakeholders, and quite frankly, the discussions we've had is that a lot of the materials that are being required are commonly used and being manufactured anyway. And as we're having in discussions with the home builders, they've been pretty cooperative and willing to talk to us about these issues.
Yeah, absolutely. The level of energy code we're talking about now is something less than the IECC 2009. What we've heard is that because so many other states have already adopted the higher-level standard, the IECC 2009, products are already being built to those specifications, and so they're readily available on the market already. The historic preservation side, we are taking with green guidelines. This is a review of the historic preservation requirements. The guidelines—the purpose of the historic preservation guidelines is to protect the character of historic neighborhoods. And while purchasing a home in a historic neighborhood or any existing home is more sustainable or greener than building new, in some cases, the existing guidelines conflicted with opportunities to retrofit a home to make it more energy efficient. So the purpose of the review of those guidelines is to look for opportunities to be more flexible in those where it would not—where we could still preserve the character of those historic neighborhoods, but allow homeowners to get some more energy efficiency out of their homes as well. So examples under consideration include, for example, allowing double-pane windows on the back half of the house where it wasn't visible from the street, which would be quite an energy savings, and also allowing products like hardy plank instead of replacing wood siding because of the increased durability and longevity of the product. And the new green guidelines will also highlight options that homeowners already have that they may not be aware of to make their homes more energy efficient, like installing geothermal, which is currently allowed under the green—under the current historic preservation guidelines, or adding more insulation to their homes. So once that staff review is complete, we expect that the draft guidelines will go to the HP Commission in March and then to Planning Commission and Council following that.
Jennifer, have you had some public meetings as well with some of the neighborhoods?
There had, yeah. There were meetings—at the meetings of the neighborhood associations, HP staff was there to introduce these and ask for their feedback. And then at this Historic Preservation Expo, which we're about to talk about, we had—the consultant was there to introduce those and invite a lot of people to have a dialogue and talk about those guidelines.
You're going to make a lot of neighborhoods very, very happy in helping with some of these guidelines. Thank you.
And so well, on historic preservation, the HP staff coordinated a green expo in August, this last August, at the Cox Convention Center. It was well-attended. Over 500 people came to it. I know a couple of council members were there as well. And there were a lot of draws for attendees. One, it was an opportunity for them to come and learn about historic preservation, what the existing guidelines are, and to talk to other people who live in historic neighborhoods. They could meet vendors who provided HP-related goods and services. There was also a variety of workshops that were really excellent, workshops and very hands-on demonstrations. How do you repair windows in an older home? Make repairs to masonry or painting. And the consultant did talk about the HP green guidelines in several sessions that were repeated over the course of the two days so that attendees could get an opportunity to give feedback. The event got great reviews. We've had interest and requests to have another one, so looking forward to that. This last category, I'm going to talk about some of our community programs. We have three of these, and the first one is our Green Home Loan Program. Another goal of our Energy Efficiency and Conservation Strategy was to assist Oklahoma City residents who want to make their homes more energy efficient. But for those who want to make changes, a barrier can be the cost of upfront investment in order to make the retrofit or purchase the equipment that is necessary for them to realize that long-term savings over time. So Oklahoma City used funds from the block grant to develop what's called a Residential Energy Efficiency Loan Program. We call it Green Home Loan Program for short. It's administered by Community Action Agency, and it provides low-interest loans for people who are here in Oklahoma City who want to make upgrades to their homes. Households can borrow up to $15,000 for a term of up to four years, and the interest rate is set at 3%. There are a few criteria. The most basic of those criteria is that the household income needs to be $100,000 or less. It needs to be owner-occupied as the primary residence, and it needs to be within the Oklahoma City corporate limits. For those who meet those criteria, it's a wonderful opportunity to make these changes to a home. The loans typically begin with an energy audit to identify opportunities for savings. And once that's done, they can use it to purchase Energy Star appliances to replace outdated, inefficient appliances. They can use it for insulating the home in the attic or the walls, for exterior doors and windows that are more energy efficient. And for those homes that have already done a lot of those things, it can be used for alternative energy as well, for solar, solar hot water, for example. This is a revolving loan fund also, so as the current loans are paid back, those funds will continue to be available to new homeowners to make these upgrades. Our next program is bike share. Our bike share program will be called Spokys. Bike sharing is a phenomenon that's really taking off across the United States and seeing a lot of success. It's much like bike rental, but with scattered stations throughout an area where people can check out a bike from a station on an automated kiosk and use that bike, either return it back to the same station or use it to return it to another station for a one-way ride or a series of one-way rides. It is a great program for a lot of reasons. It provides convenience and accessibility to people who are navigating through an area, and we'll see that through downtown. Can reduce vehicle traffic by providing an alternative means of transportation for those who would otherwise drive short distances. More people out and about helps the vitality of our city, and it's also an opportunity for exercise where someone may previously have been taking a car for a short distance. The downtown bike share was initially recommended in the Downtown Strategic Initiative back in 2008. So when Oklahoma City received the block grant, we were able to include this in our Energy Efficiency and Conservation Strategy as under the transportation category. Our program will have 95 bikes at six stations, and they'll all be in the central Oklahoma City core to start out at this pilot phase. We had—we will be using EECBG funds we've used to purchase the bicycles, the stations, the racks, and the equipment. And then in addition to that, we'll contract out for program management, and that's a process we're going through, receiving requests for proposals on that now. So the bike show stations will be fully automated. They're actually solar-powered, so they don't have to tie into the grid, and they'll be really convenient for anyone who wants to use them. If someone is in the downtown area frequently, you can become a member, and you'll have a membership card that you can tap on the station to check out the bike. Or for those who are visitors or just visiting Oklahoma City for a day, a credit card will serve the same purpose. That program will launch this spring.
How many—what's the cost of the—this program for the bike share?
I don't have the cost figures with me right now, but I can get them for you.
The bikes were purchased with the E—the EECBG block grant that was bought, and they are—we have the bikes in hand now, and now we're in the process of doing two things, is getting the stations where they check in and out of—and getting the contract for the operation thereof. So we'll be getting—we'll have follow-up information. We'll come back to you shortly on that.
Okay, and the third community program I wanted to tell you about was our Outreach and Education Program. As public interest in sustainability has increased, there's also been a corresponding increase desire for information among the public. So the Sustainability Office sponsored a workshop series in 2011. It had 23 events last year. Total attendance at those was 850 people, and we definitely saw an increase in attendance as word-of-mouth spread, and we had really excellent feedback from those with attendance increasing over time. So we will continue that in 2012, and we're currently writing our next six-month proposal for a continued workshop series. So that concludes the activities of the Office of Sustainability I was talking about today. I do have one last slide here. And it's just a reminder that stewardship of our resources of the environment and of energy here in Oklahoma City is something that we've been doing for a long time, not just an activity of the Office of Sustainability. So, well, we can definitely do more. There are many things that we're already doing that make our city more sustainable.
You have a question? I'm not sure I understood the conversation on the Energy Conservation Code, the IECC 2009 code, is required to be adopted by who? Who made the requirement that we adopt that?
It is a requirement that came—the states—I believe all the states, if not most of the states, incurred by accepting ARRA funds.
Okay. And the second question is, I understood you say we were going to—we—Oklahoma City was going to adopt a code slightly less stringent than 2009 IECC code?
Yeah, ultimately, that is up to council, but the proposal would be that we develop an interim code at this time, and what's being proposed is that we—the new residential and commercial codes that are going to be considered by council in the coming month or two each have an energy chapter within them. And so our recommendation will be that that chapter of the code be adopted as the Oklahoma City Energy Code because it's already established and really widely understood. And that would allow us to set the processes in place for our internal staff to be set up to administer an energy code, and also for the public to be used to work with.
And this effort will be completed by 2017?
Yeah, reaching that higher...
By 2017, we in Oklahoma City then would be complying with requirements 2009 IECC?
Yes, that's the intention. I believe...
Was there any concern that during that interim period, Oklahoma City and Oklahoma, maybe, would become a dumping ground for materials that didn't meet those standards?
That's not a concern I have heard expressed.
I think the requirement across the board is for '17, so I think most states are looking to transition into that timeframe.
Okay. So if we're not going to be unique in this?
That's correct.
Okay, so we—then we shouldn't be a target for dumping substandard materials, materials that don't meet those standards?
That's correct. That's correct. You know, we're in the process of looking at all the new codes. The new codes have come through on a periodic basis, and they've been adopted by the state. So we're going to be looking at a number of codes over the next several months as they come down the line.
Has a state adopted an interim code also?
A new what?
Has a state ado—will the state adopt interim code or they adopt the 2009 standards right now?
What I've understood is that the order that the state is addressing these is the state adopted last summer the new residential code, the IRC 2009. This summer, they will address the commercial code, and the following summer, address the energy code.
Okay, so at the end of that following summer, they will be in compliance with the 2009 standards? And we still be working on interims?
Yes. We would have the option to go directly to an IECC 2009 level now. Either of those options is available to us.
And what would be the advantage of going to a lesser standard than the 2009 standard?
The intention of that is that we would have a more gradual process so that we could develop our internal city processes, make sure that we are able to do the inspections as necessary, get those underway. The inspections on an energy code are a little more in-depth than inspections on a residential or commercial building code because they can be performance-based, and that's something that we need to get a process established for.
Thank you, Jen.
Skip?
Yes. You kind of led into my concern, and that is the inspection. First, my question is, is the adopting of the code, is that one of the requirements under the acceptance of the $5 million grant?
It was—the adopting of the IECC 2009 was an obligation incurred by the states, but that filters down to us.
We cannot adopt a code less than what the state adopts for building codes. An example that's coming forward is in the new code, there's a requirement for sprinkler systems, residential sprinkler systems, which has been—we discussed that in the past. The state adopted that code without that provision and left it as a local option. So when we adopt that code coming forward, we're going to adopt the code, and then we're going to have to address at this council whether or not we want to adopt residential sprinklers as required or not. We can adopt something more stringent than the state. We cannot adopt something less stringent than the state.
So the state's code requires the sprinkler system?
No, they left that for the local option.
Okay. Then, a question to me, how will this be enforced compared to the codes that we presently have? Because I understand that we have a great challenge as it relates to enforcement of codes now because of the lack of manpower.
And that's only going to increase. As we go and adopt the new code, as Jennifer pointed out, these are going to be performance-based codes and the energy code. For example, we're going to have to check and see if there's a vacuum in the house, whether or not the air stays in the house and how well it seals. We don't do that now at this point in time. We go and inspect physically the things that are out there, but we don't—we don't actually test anything in the house to check out its energy performance. And it will be required that we do that, and we're going to have to develop new procedures and more staffing to address that as we go forward. And that's some of the issues we're going to have to address as we adopt these codes over the next few years. Typically, our permit fees pay for the enforcement and inspection of these codes. And so we're going to have to take a look at that whole with the new codes, what's going to be the cost to enforce, or we're going to have to modify our permits to adopt that, or we're going to supplement that with general fund. There are some issues that we're going to have to address as we go forward over the next few years as we adopt these codes.
And I presume that these new codes apply only to new construction going forward?
Yes, yeah, it's not retroactive.
That's correct.
Yes, Larry?
Question, if I could, on the Green Homes program. That may be the wrong name, but what I understand that is, is if I'm—if I have income of less than $100,000 and I want to do some energy upgrade on my home, I can get a 3% loan that'll have to be repaid in...
Four years.
Forty-eight months. What happens if I don't repay it?
It is administered just like any other loan program. The Community Action Agency has several other loans on contract with us. They make sure that they check a credit score, they do a background check. It is administered by nonprofit, but it's considered like a bank loan.
So in effect, if I don't repay that loan, I could end up with my house in foreclosure?
I don't know the exact details of how that is, how that works out for the ramifications of it, but I can find out from our—some Community Action...
I'd be interested. We're loaning money to folks who are barely on the brink, and is there a risk that some of this—if they can't pay, if circumstances change during that 48 months, what happens to their—to their house that they have? I'd be interested in just knowing.
This was set at a fairly high threshold as far as loan programs go. A $100,000 for a household was meant to target not only low-income households, but also moderate-income households. But Community Action Agency is very diligent about making sure someone has the funds to pay it back. They sit down and work through a budget with them, and our repayment rate has been very high so far.
Okay, thank you.
We'll go back to council members to ask you what the ramifications are upon default.
Yeah, David, your honor, Director Gooden, thank you for your presentation. I think this is one of the critical services... I think this is one of the critical services the city can be providing over the next five to 10 years. I used to fall into the category of not being aware or concerned about the issue of sustainability up until a few years ago, and then became more involved through the American Institute of CPAs on this concept. I think the most important thing we can do is continue to educate the citizens of Oklahoma City as far as the importance and the benefits that they'll obtain through efforts to improve sustainability. You know, from a corporate side, corporate America's taken hold of this very seriously the last five to 10 years, and when you begin to study the efforts of Walmart, the energy industry and, and other corporations to improve sustainability, it's, it's truly pretty impressive. What the average citizen may not be aware of is that we continue to consume and use up our natural resources in certain countries throughout the world, especially in Europe. It's not surprising to have those countries have to import usable water. Portugal, Spain, other countries have to import water, just like we have to import oil. Here in the U.S., we run short of water. In 2010, the city of Atlanta's water supply dropped down to a 90-day level, which is considered a, an emergency-type level. So the more we can educate people about the importance of sustainability and utilizing less and less of our natural resources, and then on the positive side, often you'll see a payback of two to three years for these improvements that are made, especially in commercial properties, but also in residential properties to improve energy efficiency. So you're actually getting a payback under fairly quick terms in the reduction in energy costs. So I think that's probably one of the most important things, and I know Director Gooden does a great job, her and her office, with respect to education, but the more we can do to help improve that and explain why this is so important, I think will be the greatest service we can do. Now, in regard to that, and talking about the bicycle program, Director Gooden and I would like to reserve enough bicycles for all of city council to utilize in the first week, and, and I'm offering to spend, to provide lunch at Capitol Hill, at the Grill on the Hill, for all those, including Francis and Kenny. From the council, we'd like to join us on a bicycle trip over there. I think it'd be fun, and hopefully it would help bring attention to the issue of sustainability. So if we could reserve enough bicycles that first week, we, we, we think that'd be a good way to continue to educate and promote this idea. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Very exciting, thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing else in the city manager reports?
No, sir.
All right, citizens to be heard. We have one person that signed up, Roy Stafford.
Good morning, Roy Stafford, 3901 South Portland Avenue, Apartment 109, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Morning to the mayor, members of the city council. And being brief, I would like to make a suggestion for possibly revisiting the naming of the boulevard that will replace I-40. The only suggestion I can make is from my own personal experience. My father, on the grocery store, in the area that I-40 relocated everyone in that area. The name of the grocery store was Blue Moon Grocery Store and Sandwich Shop. Now, that's just one option. And the reason that I'm, before you guys today, identity is a major part of being an African-American male, growing up in Oklahoma City. The reason I say this is, I suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder, diagnosed, not military-related. Product of a single-parent home. My mother died, my father died when I was three, my mother raised me from the age of three. These young African-American males don't stand a chance because they have no identity. If you had experiences that I have had in my younger years, in the 70s, the neighborhood that I grew up in, if you didn't live in the box between 16th, 23rd, Eastern Avenue at that time, and the railroad tracks, and it got dark, you had to walk down Eastern Avenue. You could not come through our neighborhood because of the way we were raised, to respect every person in that box. You couldn't walk through our neighborhood. And it wasn't out of, it wasn't because it was a gang, it was because of the way we were raised. We were raised to respect everyone and every being on this earth. The city has strayed from that. The world has strayed from that. This is a compression star. From a contact wound from an Oklahoma City police officer while I was handcuffed because of the way I am. I do not bite my tongue, I can't stand the taste of blood in my mouth, I will not bite a person. But I am hard as bricks. And when I stood before you guys concerning the sidewalk issue at 23rd and Martin Luther King, that was because it had to be done. I want to thank Senator Johnson, my first cousin Alfreda Gates, Dr. Gilbert Parks, Captain Dan Evans at Oklahoma City Police Department, Spring Lake Division, Lieutenant Stan Campbell, Oklahoma City Police Department, Spring Lake Division, and most of all, Chief City, for giving me where I am. This ain't no joke. Everyone that I've asked for, audiences with, that for one reason or another have not had the time, I know I stood before y'all a bunch of times and I made a bunch of y'all mad, but that ain't what it's about. It's about giving these kids a chance. If you had the brakes beat off you like I am, you'd understand where I'm standing here. The police officer that gave me this blood clot in my leg drew his service weapon and a taser on me two weeks before Christmas, after I called for assistance four times. Thinking you'd shut me up? Or a person who shut me up does not reside on this earth. No man can stop. The Stafford name real deep in this town. I know who my parents were. My great-grandmother was on her occupation in the 1860s. My great-grandmother's occupation was housekeeping with no G. If you look in the slave dictionary, that means she was retained for breeding purposes. You know yourself like that? Ain't nothing out here can sway you from what you were raised to believe in. That is the only thing that's going to help the situation in your world. Running, running the police in there, sending me to the penitentiary, trying to make me into a rat? I'll never be a rat, cuz that don't, that don't happen in this life. That's what happened to me. A half a meal is what I would have made from 1989 to now, without cost of living increases. So I don't know, I don't know what it's going to take, I don't know what it's going to take, I don't know how many times I'm going to have to come down there. I hate being made a lie. I made a statement, this was the last time I was going to prove it for this council. I hate being made a lie. I hate it. One thing I hate worse is getting woke up in my sleep by my elders for not, for me not doing what I know that I can do to sway the tide that the city is, that the city, the direction that the city is going in. I got youngsters scared to talk to the police. Why, why are you afraid to talk to the police? The police are your friends. They're not, they're not for you to use as, as, as tools to get your, your buddies out of the neighborhood. That's not what it's about. It's, the police are supposed to be these kids' friends. My youngsters in the neighborhood that I grew up in are afraid to talk to the police. When they see the police come, they run high. I mean, little kids. What's that about? What are we going to do to change that type of attitude amongst youngsters? I wasn't raised like that. I wasn't raised like that, and I just, it just...
We have executive session, we'll be back.